Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners Work Session, today's Thursday, May the 5th, 2022. We appreciate all of you that are with us in attendance, as well as those that are with us online. We'll get into the unfinished business first up, we have a presentation of Elliott Road realignment and widening. County Manager David Headley, this last appeared on the February 17th, 2022 voting session agenda, David.
Good afternoon Chair, uh, good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners, uh, yes sir, let me give you a little background information, uh, for the folks and, uh, that are tuned in, uh, so they can get, uh, kind of a view where we're at on this. So, uh, the Elliott Road widening project begins at the intersection of Couch Road and terminates at the hairpin curve at the intersection of Sunset Drive. There are thirty-five parcels, both commercial and residential bordering this portion of Elliott Road. Sunset Drive and Ruby Lane connect to the Elliott Road, uh, thereby providing access to an additional thirty residential properties. The asphalt paving widths along Elliott range from twelve foot to twenty-three feet. Elliott's right-of-way ranges from twelve to forty feet, varying throughout that corridor. So under the current information, the residents, mainly those living in Sunset Drive and Ruby Lane, have expressed concerns relating to the overall safety of Elliott Road. These concerns are based on site distance, alignment, pavement widths. Public Works has obtained a proposed realignment and widening design from Davis Engineering, which you've seen. The design provides a continuous forty-foot right-of-way and two twelve-foot travel lanes. An open forum, uh, meeting was held at Fire Station Two on March the fifteenth to discuss the resi-, uh, discuss with the residents, the proposed project and the design received from Davis Engineering. There were Platts legal descriptions, donation waiver forms, and, uh, they were distributed to residents, uh, uh, and the forms provided, uh, to those, uh, property donations, offers of fair market value, negotiations with the county for required property rights. To date, Public Works has received one donation waiver form requesting fair market value and one verbal response. The verbal response consisted of a resident stipulating that, uh, he would not sell, nor would, uh, he donate, uh, myself, Commissioner Fawcett, and, uh, Denise Farr, Public Works Director, uh, met with that individual, and, uh, we had some discussions there. In which it was not in favor of really any improvement to that roadway. So, based on all these factors, um, I come to you today, uh, basically that staff's recommendation is going to be that, uh, in the near future, that we just overlay this road for now. Where we can on the easterly side, uh, which is the non-residential side, look at, uh, field fitting, uh, a, uh, shoulder, uh, anywhere from two to four foot. And then, uh, pull-offs where we can get them, uh, within the site distance areas. Uh, this would be more of a, a, a field determination rather than going back and getting a redesign and, and paying for additional design efforts. So that's kind of where we are right now. So I answer any questions you may have.
Questions to County Manager? Don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I think we've put a lot of time and effort into this to, uh, see what the residents thought, that lived on that, and I went down there, I think every one of y'all went down there. And met with some people up and down the road, and, uh, you know, some were not too happy with any type of donation, or anything such as that. So personally, I think the re- recommendation from the staff is probably the way to go at this time.
What's the cost of this?
Well, it's gonna depend Commissioner, based on what we end up doing when we feel fit this, um.
And, and explain, what, what is that?
Again, because the, the right-of-way varies so much down through there, there may be areas that we can get a little more, uh, than, you know, a two-foot, maybe we can get four-foot, you know, because like I said, in some of those areas, there's actually a forty-foot right-of-way versus another area that may, uh, pinch down. So if, uh, depending on where we're at and what we can do, um, that's gonna determine obviously the different, uh, amounts of asphalt stuff, we're looking at probably just over a hundred and fifty thou-, about a hundred and seventy thousand versus, uh, the two, roughly two million, if you will. Uh, one of the things that we also have talked about was going ahead back there in the back, is going ahead and overlaying those roads as well, uh, once we do this project, that way we get it all done and, and they're, uh, in need of, of repairs as well, and, uh, so we'll look at that, uh, and come up with a better estimate it down the road.
Any thoughts on why the forms were not returned, when you gave people opportunity to?
Uh, well, I can only base that on the public meeting that we held, uh, that, that you all were in attendance, um, is, uh, again, there's, there's a, a really, uh, kind of a, a split decision as to which way they want to go on it, there's just not a whole lot of interest in getting anything done on there. But at best, we need to, from our standpoint, at least make the repairs and the overlay on the road in order to cut down on the continuous maintenance with pothole repairs and, and shoulder, uh, breaks and that kind of thing, so. Uh, at a minimum, that's what, uh, we'd like to do is just overlay.
I think that Mr. Quarles had said that, that there wasn't an option on there that he wanted to check, because he was opposed to it, you remember that? He said there was no, uh, thing to check, I do not, I am not in favor of this. There was some other choices, and he, he said it didn't apply, and that's one reason that, it didn't apply to his situation, that's one reason why he didn't return it.
Well, one of the things that we did here, and I'm, I'm sure, uh, you would probably echo, is that, uh, staying away from the residential side, especially in some of the areas where the improvements are close to the existing right-of-way. Um, that was what they were in favor of more than, than anything else, and obviously this would have no impact on the, the front parcels, uh, as you enter onto that road, that would include the boat storage and, and maybe a relocation of the existing barn, or, you know, any impacts up through there, so.
So that will stay the same, like, you know, we're standing dinner, they'll say, well, it won't miss him.
That's correct.
The, the feedback, you and I've talked about that, that curve that's pretty stout, and I think we talked again to see if we could engage with that particular, I'm trying to look at that, that property owner, um, that owns that one curve, to be able to shave that back, maybe twenty feet, and if we get more site distance, that seemed to be one of the many complaints that, that I was hearing, is that, that danger.
We've talked about that, and also, uh, you know, within the, the existing right-of-way that we have, being able to do that, and then see where we are, and see if that property owner would be willing to, uh, assist us in just a construction easement, uh, temporary construction easement, rather than going in and actually taking over, uh, right-of-way, or that kind of thing, so they would retain.
That is part of what you're talking, when the field assessment, that would be part of it, so we, you may potentially come back to us and say, in order to do this, we need to buy a sliver of land or something in this process.
That's correct.
Gotcha. And then, yeah.
Oh, how quickly will this get started if, you know?
Well, we don't have the budget on it right now, we wait towards the end of the year, see where we're at, and, and what, uh, we can do at that point.
Is anybody talking to you about the road anymore?
No man, I haven't had any calls. Not actually since the time you and I met with the individual.
Oh, okay, that's been a while, okay.
And what, what, what did we spend on the design?
Plus forty thousand.
Four thousand. No, we, we've been working on this, and I've talked to, County Manager, too, we've met several occasions down there with, with the homeowners, and this has been going on for probably four or five years or longer. I've been involved in it four years, and it's just, it's just, people don't want to give up their land, that's the biggest thing, they don't want to give up the right-of-way to make it wider, they want it safer, but then, if we don't have, if we don't have the right-of-way to make it safer, and some of them just don't want to give it up.
Well, and even, and you can't go. Commissioner, we, we made an attempt to narrow it down as much as we possibly could, which was the consistent forty-foot right-of-way through there, because that's what some of the right-of-way was, and so, uh, that didn't even go.
Well, when we met with Mr. Quarles, uh, it really got down in his yard.
Yes ma'am.
You remember?
Well, I think, I think some people were confused with, I think there was ribbons out there, that when you stake the right-of-way, it can come into your yard, but realistically, pavement is still fifteen feet away, I mean, your right-of-way is still a very big distance, so, um, some people get confused with, all right, pavement's coming to my front door, well, it's not.
The pavement was pretty bad for him, too.
Yeah, yeah, we even measured it off.
Yes, we did, yeah, because I have to, I have to have it drawn out for me, I have to see it. I wouldn't have liked it either, so.
Who was that, which one was it, Quarles?
Yeah. Any other questions for the County Manager? Uh, move ahead and bring us back something, y'all good with him, move ahead and bring us back something, call swaps?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, moving to new business, first up, presentation request to apply for a 2022 community-oriented policing services grant, cops grant, Sheriff Jeff Johnson, Greg, you gonna do that, someone up here, Greg?
Sheriff Johnson couldn't be here tonight, that we have a barricaded subject on Dawson Forest Road, he's barricaded there with a shotgun, so, going down there, too.
I'm surprised you're here.
I am too, actually. Now, this is important, so.
Being you the expert on those.
I probably will leave from here.
I would doubt that. They'll probably be waiting on you.
Oh, I'm not the, anyway, this is, um, something that, a lot of these grants, I know the chairman's real good about sending, uh, grant notifications and all to us, and this is one that we feel like we may actually have a chance for, the, it's a cops grant, you hear that sometimes in the news and different things you read, which is the Office of Community Oriented Policing to the U.S. Department of Justice. Uh, they've, uh, freed up, I guess, if you will, or allocated is a better term, probably, uh, one hundred and fifty-six point five million dollars for this program, and it's basically what it is, is to hire additional officers, is what it boils down to. Uh, it can only be used to hire certified officers, gun toters, as I call them, folks that go out in the field, and it's because it's not for detention officer corrections type folks, it's just mostly for certified law, well, only, uh, for certified law enforcement officers. The, um, what we're looking at doing is hopefully, if things go well, with your permission and with the chairman's signature as well, and documentation, is apply for, for positions, which will essentially give our four shifts one additional, uh, staff member. So, uh, with that in mind, the cost of this, or they, it, it is a seventy-five percent grant, uh, with a twenty-five percent match there, therein lies the reason I'm here, is, is to get, you know, a permission, A, to apply for it, and B, to, uh, to see if, if we're interested, I guess, in, in the twenty-five percent local match, so. Um, unfortunately, I got, got this thrown in my lap right here due to this emergency, so I don't have a whole lot more information, I could probably.
It's over a three-year period.
It is three-year period, and it's, it's, uh, you have to keep the folks you hire at least one year.
It does their salary and benefits.
Yes.
Okay, and it's a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five thousand per position.
Per position.
Yep, and, and I guess they base that on what you're currently paying, or whatever, same thing we went through with the fire department.
Yeah, it's very similar to that.
And, and the sheriff had called me after I, I sent him this grant, because they, I get these all the time, and I sent it over to him, and, uh, he had called me, and I said, well, I think you should put in for it, because you are gonna need more people over time, and if we can get three-quarters of it paid for, with a grant, and you know how I feel about grants, that you should apply.
Absolutely.
And so.
Is it a scale down to three?
Nope, nope, seventy-five percent a year for three years.
And then we fully absorb it.
Yeah, and then you absorb it on that, after this. Like we did the safer grant, safer grant had a little bit of different philosophy, it scaled down a little bit, but this is straight up seventy-five.
Seventy-five for those three.
So, and when I, I looked at it, and I sent it to him, I said, this is a great opportunity right here.
Yep, it's one of the best opportunities I think we've had in a while to be able to do these, because the eligibility requirement's pretty strict in a lot of cases, uh, there are some things that we, uh, if we fit in certain categories, we, we receive more points, if you will, on the application. Uh, so, uh, some of those are some of the current topics of the day nationally, and some of them are ones that we apply, should, should apply.
And this is coming up pretty quick, so you want this to be moved, correct?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind, this is, uh, we need to get this going pretty quick, we've got a deadline first of June there, to get all this going.
I think it's a good opportunity, we do need to be very cognizant that we use the CARES Act funding to bring up some salaries in a big way, and that expires about the same time this will expire, so.
Twenty, twenty.
Three, four years, we're gonna have a big absorption, it's gonna be hitting us.
Potentially big chunk, yes.
Yep, and I'm already thinking of that.
I think it's good, but I'm always concerned about if you can hire somebody.
Yeah.
We just seem to have such a problem.
It's a huge problem, and it's not just us, it's. You know, there's, uh, every day I see advertisements for, in different incentives, uh, coming police departments, something on Facebook today about how they're paying, you know, by, by year four or five, you're making seventy, eighty thousand, whatever it is, I, I don't quote me on that. But they're just, all these benefits, they're trying to throw at it, folks, just enticing to come.
Yes.
Uh, hiring bonuses, that's just unheard of in public safety, but it's out there now, it's just become a commonplace, and unfortunately, you know, in my opinion, the, the way things have been nationally, it's put a damper on public safety hire, and, uh, so, I won't get into that too much, but.
Yeah.
So, but it's, it's difficult, and, uh, where we, I think we've got, uh, right now, we're looking at, I think, agency-wide, uh, six vacancies, I think, that's, uh, is that right? Seven vacancies agency-wide, which is not horrible, really, compared to some places that are thirty and forty percent off, I mean, some places are really hurting bad.
And the last time I had any communication with Hawk County, they were like seventy.
Yeah, it was bad, Hawk County's horrible, they really are in bad shape, that's what I heard. Yeah, it's difficult, this is kind of, uh, unusual, uh, request, because, yeah, it's hard to get folks to fill the slots, it really is, however, this, this is a rare opportunity, I feel like maybe we'll benefit from it.
Things will change.
Yeah.
Right, things can change.
Big positive.
There you go.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Greg?
If we did get the grant, when would it, when would we get the funding for that?
I'm, I'm not sure when they actually turned the funding loose, it's this year, though, it'd be the latter part of this year, as I'm standing, usually, I'll, I'll imagine, what is the federal fiscal year, is it October?
October one.
So that's, that's my understanding, again, don't hold me to this, because I haven't had a whole lot of time to study, but, that's my understanding.
Do you write the grant?
Ma'am.
Do you write the grant?
It's, I do part of it, uh, we, we have a, a little small team internally.
Okay, and y'all know the buzzwords.
Yeah, we gotta have a whole buzzword, I have a fancy dancy manual that I use, to make sure I use their words, they won't see it.
Yeah. He said that buzzwords they look for, so I will make sure we have them.
We got, we do that.
That's the way to do it.
I assume it's a reef, a re- refund on the backend, is that, is that usually the way that works, where we pay for it upfront, then they refund us once a year, or something on the backend?
That's typical.
We'd have to, you bring these three on, they have to be sort of four on, they have to be certified officers, would you be, I mean, they would go into a patrol position, which would require more cars and more gear?
Yeah, you're still looking at, um, bullets and badges, as I call it, uh, they're still, you know, fortunately, the spots funding for vehicles is not a huge issue, if we can find vehicles available, but then, you're correct, we'd have to have the, all the.
What, what's the cost, what's a cost per employee when you bring one on, that, for this job, that would go along with this?
For the, uh, equipment, as we're talking about, like.
Whatever we would, I mean, we hire the guy, we gotta give him outfitting, so that's, the outfitting is not being covered by the grant, it doesn't sound like, so what's the ancillary cost of outfitting this officer?
I'd have to get back to, to give you an exact figure, I'd have to get back to you, give you an exact figure on that, or Commissioner Gaines, I'm not sure, it's not cheap, that's for sure.
Boy, is it fifty thousand?
Uh, we're, we're talking, uh, I'm gonna give you a ballpark anywhere between thirty and fifty, depending on, on that.
Two hundred grand.
Bullets, badges, and bulletproof vests.
Well, absolutely, and that's one of the huge costs, is that the firearm and the bulletproof vests are rather expensive, especially the bulletproof vests that's growing up, uh, almost a thousand dollars now, we're somewhere in the area of seven, eight hundred dollars, it's just, wow, absolutely essential to have them.
Gotta have those. Put yours on when you leave here.
I will. Yes, sir.
I got mine on right now.
I sit there right next to me, my seat, so I will be putting it on.
Any other questions for Greg? Good with moving it forward?
Yes.
Ah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Stay safe down there. Next up, we have present, presentation of requests to accept FY twenty twenty-two Georgia Trauma Commission EMS trauma-related equipment grant, our service director Danny Thompson, Danny.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, this is a annual reoccurring grant that we have, um, we kind of got late notice on it, um, the trauma team was a little late getting it out, and they didn't get it out till the last week of April, uh, and we do have to try to move it forward tonight, just FYI. Uh, funds did increase a little bit this year, um, from five thousand eighty-nine forty is what we will be receiving under the trauma grant, uh, we'll make the purchase, uh, initially out of budget, those funds usually come to us about the end of June, um, from the Trauma Commission Association. Again, these are funded from the super speeder laws, um, that are out there, uh, that was established back in twenty-ten, uh, I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
You're gonna buy, tell them what you're gonna get.
Yeah, so we're purchasing on this, uh, three Surface Pros, uh, that is what we use for the med units in the field to do the patient care reports out there.
Questions for Danny? No.
Funded by super speed.
Yep.
Do need to move forward to tonight, if y'all can.
I'm not acknowledging if I've contributed to that fund or not.
Those four cop positions you're going to fund may, may help support that super speed.
He's playing the fifth, alright.
But yes, I'm fine.
Good with moving it forward?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Alright. Presentation of request for FY twenty-three capital funds for Georgia Department of Transportation bus lease, Senior Services Director Dawn Johnson, Dawn, good to see you.
Good to see you, too. I have two presentations today, the first one is for Senior Services Transit, and it's a request for twenty twenty-three capital funds for a bus lease, it's been several years since we have received a new bus. Uh, Dawson County receives a new bus from GDOT, when an older bus in our fleet system reaches either five years or a hundred and fifty thousand miles. Uh, the Board of Commissioners approved the contract with GDOT for FY twenty twenty-three funding on ten twenty-one twenty-one, but the capital funding was not included. Uh, GDOT pays ninety percent match with federal and state funding, and then the county will pay the ten percent match, the bus that this one's replacing is seven years and has a hundred and thirteen thousand miles on it currently. And our ten percent match, of course, would be six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Questions for Dawn? So Dawn, uh, when would we actually get this bus, in two thousand twenty-three, or before?
It, no, it would be in two thousand and twenty-three, and just like everything else, everything is delayed, so.
Right.
You know, usually.
So we're gonna approve this and actually put it into twenty twenty-three budget?
We could, we could.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What are we doing, the old buses, it's surplus, or?
Well, we've talked about this for a while, uh, several years, every time we've received a new bus, uh, we're talking with, uh, Shannon Harbin right now, and if we would like to one day buy out a bus, if possible, if it's a good bus, according to fleet, if it's a bus that's not had a lot of issues, and since we've gone over to gas instead of diesel, which has been a long time. The buses are lasting a lot longer, of course, we, we're on, we've been talking about roads, where, there's some rough roads out there still in the county and rough driveways, uh, and such that we go in and out of, but if there is a good bus in our fleet, we would one day like to buy out one of those buses, because we can probably get one for about four thousand dollars. And if we can, especially this one in particular, depending on how many miles is on it, if it is a good bus to purchase, uh, of course, the insides are immaculate, because the, they're not on there that, that long of a time, uh, it's the wear and tear on the transmission and the engine, of course, and Shannon would help us with that. I would like to eventually buy one of those used buses, so that we could, uh, put it in our fleet at the senior center, it would not fall under GDOT or FTA, it would be a county bus. Uh, we could use it to transport, like, when transit is, cannot get us in there, we could also use it, uh, if we needed to do something within county, to be able to transport anything, and, you know, we've had the meeting recently where we're helping creative enterprises, and we're up to two now, and that would be something we make it help out ba- there, where we can't fit it into our transit operations. So we do have a fifty-three oh seven grant, um, coming up that we have been, uh, I think we've got roughly sixty-five thousand dollars, and, uh, last year, last week, we had a, uh, a conference call with GDOT and, uh, finance staff about that grant, and that would be to purchase capital, which would be another new bus, but if we could keep one of these old buses just as a backup, because honestly, uh, when we take and turn this bus in, we take it to Gainesville, and I went the last time we turned a bus in, and it's over there, if you're going towards, uh, Jefferson, and you turn left there, uh, that bus is probably still sitting there, that we turned in the last time, uh, so, there, I don't think they do, do a good job in, in putting those buses out there, out there and selling it, if we could keep that bus, we could get more use out of it. I think ever so often, they probably have a sale like we have, I'm, I'm sure it's what they do, but there was a Dawson County bus still over there, as well as a Lumpkin and Versailles, and that's where that, I call it the bus graveyard, so, uh, if we could one day purchase these buses, one of these, uh, that fleet says will be a good bus, we would like to do that for not much of a cost to the, to us.
Be well worth looking into.
Yes, it is.
So do we want to include this in our, I, I mean, it might be twenty, it might be twenty twenty-three.
I guess you have to let them know something here.
We do, I think.
So we need to vote on it, and, on the nineteenth, and then we can figure out how we need to do it.
We'll have to go ahead and mail, they've sent us this invoice, we really have to go ahead and.
Send them a check, okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, then we'll figure that out, then.
Okay.
It's pretty fun balance, isn't it?
Yep, fun balance. Alright, so, any other questions for Dawn, reference to the bus?
How is it working with creative enterprises?
Good, we actually have two, we have a, a student from Big Canoe, and he is actually, his father brings him to the Dollar General, and we pick him up at the Dollar General, and then we go and pick the other student up, they're not there, uh, every, one of them is there five days a week, and the other one, I think, is there three days a week, and it, it's working really good, and they're working with us, because, uh, to make sure we know when they're open and when they're closed, so it's a good working relationship right now, and, you know, at any time, they could call and say they have a new client that they want us to transport, but we're lucky right now, because both of those, where we pick him up and pick the next one up, it's like five minutes.
That is wonderful, but I think we need that other bus.
I mean, we can find, we can, we can definitely use it at the senior center, it's like, we've started that going on trips, and, uh, we have our new van, and twice I have, uh, called Clark McAllister and said, hey, you remember all those times I let you use our van, well, you gotta swap it, I need to use your van, because our buses have, are beginning, are used. And even though there's four of them, I've got a lot of people that's wanting to go on trip, so we have to, both my van and Clark's van and a bus to these places, so we could use another one, and it would belong to Dawson County Senior Services, not Transit Dawson County, and we, uh, we would just use it whenever we needed, and if anybody else had a purpose that they needed to use it, we could also, that would, I would be glad to loan it out.
Okay.
Other questions for Dawn? Other questions for Dawn? Alright. So move on to the next item Dawn has. Presentation of FY twenty-twenty-three Legacy Link Contract for New Precision Program Services. Dawn.
Yes, sir. This is our, just like Chairman stated, the twenty-twenty-three Legacy Link Contract that we do every year for federal and state funding. That we match Dawson County taxpayers do fund a majority of the senior center projects. But this year we'll be getting a hundred and eighty-five thousand one twenty-eight with a county match of three sixty-seven, three eighty-two. This plays for Meals on Wheels and management, uh, some transportation, a lot of different things involved with Dawson County Senior Services.
Questions for Dawn? And this is something we've done every year.
We do it every year. Yes, sir.
Have to take care of our seniors.
We had a great Mother's Day celebration today, and, uh, we also had, um, Martha from. County Register's elections come out, and she signed up several people for that, uh, need for absentee, to get absentee back. For absentee application. And so I was so glad them, I mean, hour and a half, she was very, very busy. So.
Wonderful.
We were very tickled to have her out there, so I'll definitely send a thank you to Ms. Glenda for that.
Wonderful. Any other questions for Dawn?
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up, we have Presentation of Insurance Renewal Options Medical Dental and Vision for twenty-two twenty-three Human Resource Director Christie Finley, NFP Assistant Vice President Todd Hopper. Christie.
Good afternoon. Uh, we are very excited to come before y'all today for our insurance renewal options for plan year twenty-two, twenty-three. And, um, NFP Assistant Vice President Todd Hooper is going to, he's provided a wonderful presentation that he's going to share with y'all. It's going to provide a mention to all of our benefits that are going to be renewed for this year. But also, we're mostly going to be highlighting, um, the options for our medical dental and vision. And with that, I'll let you leave on.
I like it. She says a wonderful presentation. How wonderful can insurance be? But.
It must be some sort of trap, is it?
Depending on how you look at it, we do have some, I feel like we have some good news, uh, but there's also some trend information. But as she said, I'm Todd Hooper, Assistant Vice President with NFP. We've been, uh, serving as your insurance broker consultant for employee benefits. I want to say as far back as twenty-seventeen, and again, we appreciate the opportunity to be before you again. Seems like it was just two months ago, and we were here doing this last year. Obviously, we've been through a pandemic for the last two years. COVID claims obviously impact a lot of people. At the same point in time, uh, there's been some changes in terms of RX inflation. At the same point in time. You, you as a group have, uh, a couple of high-cost claimants. We talked a little bit about that last year. How many employees drive your claim or, you know, over fifty percent of your claims? So I just want to kind of go through the rate history here. Let's talk about where we were, where we are, because that's obviously, uh, one of the things that we always like to establish is is what's been the precedent. And then where we're at currently. Is it on? Alright, we'll do the page two renewal history. Okay.
That's not it.
Insurance Engineering.
That's my expert.
There we go. There we go. Okay. So when we look back at the twenty-eighteen plan year, uh, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna go through each one of these lines, but in twenty-eighteen, we negotiated a one-point-three percent increase. In twenty-nineteen, we was able to negotiate a four-point-three percent increase. Uh, at the same point in time, in twenty-twenty, there was a renewal of seventeen and a half percent. And then as we go to last year, uh, we switched to Cigna as the carrier. And with that, there was a, um, excuse me, there was a one-point-eight percent, you'll see it says one-point-three, but should be one-point-eight percent decrease. So again, with Cigna, uh, we changed carriers. We also bundled the vision and the dental. That generally gives you anywhere from two to two and a half percent off whenever you bundle that with a carrier. There you go. Okay. Uh, Vanna, you gotta get it. So, so, so just a little bit of highlights behind, again, not just these numbers, but but what drives those numbers? In two thousand seventeen, the total claims was two-point-five million dollars. Nine hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars of those claims was RX or pharmacy. Twenty-twenty-one total claims was four million one sixty-five. RX claims was about one million two ninety-three. Year-to-date, so we go from July through January currently, and keep in mind, your prior carrier would have had the runout claims for basically July and August coming in. So these numbers are low, but then all of a sudden, they're starting to pick up faster toward the end of the year. But year-to-date through, uh, the end of January, your total claims are two million thirty-eight thousand. It's, it's not, I'm just going to, your RX is a total of that is nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of that. So when you look back from two thousand seventeen for a full year, your RX was nine hundred ninety-eight thousand. And here year-to-date, we're at nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Okay? So that begins to tell you also, uh, when you look at this, the percentage of your claims are starting to be driven by the pharmacy side and not the medical side. Okay? So we try to keep an eye on that. That's why when we're talking tonight, we talk about the formulary. We did it last year. And I know you as a board are mindful of, hey, we change carriers or we stay with the carrier. How's that formulary hit my employees? Because you're mindful of that, because at the end of the day, it's not just deductibles, but it's co-pays. And if something's on a tier one, which is low, or a tier four, it's gonna be higher. And we'll talk just briefly about that between the two, uh, competitive proposals tonight. But this year, uh, year-to-date, again, your, your claims were totaled of two million thirty-eight thousand four sixty-five. Eighteen individuals have driven one-point-one million dollars of those claims. So that's why when we talk about wellness, being able to have a robust wellness program to prevent what we call those pipeline claims is very important, getting people engaged. Uh, we talked a little bit about that last year, but I wanted to kind of drive that kind of home because, um, at the end of the day, that wellness program is something we really try to try to promote. Alright. Okay. So we had several proposals. Uh, we had some from, we had one from ACCG. We also had one from United Healthcare. I want to say United Healthcare came in around twenty-five percent. Initially, the ACCG proposal was above thirty percent. But even before we get there, I think the concern there was the negotiation going on between them and Northside Hospital could be a big disruptor. Now, they still are legally bonded to each other, but that could have been a disruptor that I don't think anybody in the room wanted to kind of, to risk that at this time. But generally, ACCG, you have to be out of that pool two years before they let you back in. This year, they did come back to everyone and give you a chance to come back into that pool. Even though they're not competitive this year, we will have met that two percent or that two-year, uh, reprieve next year in case we wanted to go back to that, depending on the proposal they provided. So we look at the Cigna current plan. Currently, based upon participation, the expected premium would be three million eight seventeen four-ten. Cigna's renewal initially came in at a twenty-two percent increase, which would have been four million six sixty-two, meaning an eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase. But before I go further with what we negotiated down, just remember last year, they also offered a, a, uh, a savings plan that was called a shared savings plan. If you ended up and you met certain criteria, well, our claims are over a hundred percent year-to-date at this point. Same point in time, they also offered a rate guarantee. And with that rate guarantee, you would have had to been at like sixty-eight percent, I believe, of claims in order to not get any type of increase. But given where your claims are at, you would, you would hit the top of the scale, so there would not be any rate guarantee. Okay? So I established that to say, when we go and look at where we went with Cigna to negotiate down to this point and not change any plan design whatsoever. They came back to a seven and a half percent increase. So I want to establish, I think upfront, even though based on the plan's performance year-to-date, there wouldn't have been any guarantee for them to come back below. Oh, below that, I think it was around, uh, eighteen percent. It could have been up to before, just no rate guarantee, seven and a half percent is a big investment on their part. And in their conversations with us, that's how they presented. They said, look, we, we lose money on some accounts. Some years, we make money on accounts, and we want the, the, uh, the clients to look at that from a perspective of a long-term relationship. And we've talked about that with our ACCG relationship in the past, about how it's a long-term relationship. So when you look at that seven and a half, going back to what I said previously. Uh, last year was a negative one-point-eight percent. Over those two years, you're about a two-point-five percent average increase between the two years, which medical trend, which is what we call inflation in that, that line. Uh, is typically six to eight percent. So you're still below what typically you would have expected to look at. Now, the other side of that is when I went back and, uh, and I looked, I, I think last year too. There's a wellness program they put in there. So we'll talk about that when we, we talk about Humana. I just wanted to establish that relationship that you have with Cigna, where we were, where we are, and what they consider they're making an investment at seven and a half percent increase. Again, they come off the twenty-two. Alright. Page. Okay, so when you're looking at this page here, what we're talking about here is with Cigna, we have, again, the three eight seventeen we paid this year. Uh, with the seven-point-five percent, it would be four million one oh three, which would be a two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar increase. Okay? So Humana, again, they were in it neck and neck like they were last year. They basically presented almost the same proposal as they presented last year. And one of the things that, you know, when you look and when we highlighted on the screen here, you'll see the yellows and the greens. You'll see the differences. There are some plan modifications for them to be able to offer the, the premium that you're offering. Uh, your office visits, uh, depending on if you're an HMO or point of service plan, currently they're thirty and forty dollars. If, uh, you're in an HMO plan, that would change from thirty to forty-five dollars, forty-five for the specialist. If you're in an open access plan, point of service, again, that would be, you're currently paying thirty to sixty dollars. That would go from thirty-five to sixty. Deductible for singles stays the same. The good news is the deductible for family coverage under Humana. Under the, oh, uh, under the HMO plan would go from forty-five hundred dollars to three thousand, so a fifteen hundred dollar reduction in the deductible for family. The point of service is currently a seventy-five hundred dollar family deductible. With the open access plan, it would go to a five thousand dollar deductible. So from a standpoint of employees, you're pulling cost off of them, and it's, is being picked up in your claims. Your out-of-pocket maximum, um, it would increase on the HMO plan for a single person is thirty-five hundred. Currently, it would move up to four thousand dollars. On the family, it goes from ten thousand five hundred dollars for that, for that, down to eight thousand for the out-of-pocket maximum. So there's some improvements in the plan design, and depending on where you're at and which tier, in terms of the deductibles and co-pays. Also, an emergency room currently is three hundred to three hundred fifty dollars plus a twenty percent deductible or copay, excuse me. With the Humana plan, it would be a flat three hundred and fifty dollars. Alright, now the tough part. Prescription drugs. We talked about how big of an impact that they play in your program, obviously, right now. And when these carriers are looking at claims, they're looking at, you know, drugs, those types of things, and they price these things. So we were very careful to look at formulary because it can be disruptive. So under the current proposal that Humana has here. You currently do not have a deductible at all on your RX. So what they're proposing is, is they, they would move, excuse me, that they would move, they would keep type one at ten dollars for the, I don't want to go through all of this. But it's basically ten dollars for your HMO and ten dollars for your POS. Is, on your point of service plan, it's a five dollar reduction in copay for that tier one drug. Under tier two, it, uh, goes up from thirty dollars to forty dollars under the HMO plan for tier two on the point of service plan, thirty-five dollars to forty dollars. So basically, ten dollars on one file on the other. Tier three, you currently pay fifty dollars and sixty dollars for the HMO and POS. That would go from fifty to seventy. And from sixty to seventy. So again, now, whenever you're pulling drug costs down, at your point of sale, the employee would feel that. The biggie that we're, I, I don't mind, we're still negotiating as we sit right here now. If you look at tier four specialty drugs, on tier four, uh, you currently have twenty percent up to two hundred dollars that the employee would pay. You have twenty-five percent, but three hundred dollars they would pay on the point of service plan. Humana plan has a flat twenty-five percent, so it's, there's no cap currently. It's open-ended. We worked with Christie and going back and forth with, with the Humana team and asked them for them to reprice that if they could match that part of the plan. Initially, they said that they were looking at, it would probably be a five to six percent increase off of their proposal. As we were sitting here before we came up, they're saying conservatively two and a half percent. But again, I, I can't ask you to make a decision tonight unless you just want to on that kind of information. Because here's the way you look at it. What's two, what's two and a half percent versus five percent? It could be up to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So if that's not hitting your claim. You know what I'm saying? Uh, and right now, when we went back and looked at the, the top drugs by dollar volume. You had roughly thirty, up to thirty-two unique individuals using those kinds of drugs. Okay? So that tells you.
Specialty, this preferred specialty you're talking about.
Yeah, when we talk about those drugs, what we're saying is, uh, uh, Trakopta, uh, Tauts, Humira. Humalog, Trulicity, Ozempic, diabetic drugs, those types of things.
Some of these are sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars of.
Yeah, you got. You could be using Trakopta, and then that's a eighteen thousand dollars per prescription. Okay? Uh, when you talk.
Are they people that use that?
Yes. They, and they use it for multiple reasons. Like, if you're looking at Humira, you can use that from arthritis to psoriasis. That's seventy-six hundred dollars a prescription. Okay, so you, you get a, an idea of why, and I'll say that with, with Cigna, they'll give a drug formulary, uh, a, a, a double look. Basically, January, basically July, and they send the information to us, and they'll tell us, here's how many members are affected. We're gonna send an email out or, or a mail to them, notifying them a couple of times in advance. Now, they do that twice a year. Humana does it once a year. Okay? Does that really make a big difference? I'm not sure, but at the end of the day, you can see where these carriers are starting, starting to focus on and why all of a sudden. Premium looks really good, but a twenty-five percent with no cap. You know, I, I'm just, I'm a conservative type person. You gotta tell me how much that affects me before I make that decision.
And their offer was with a tier three with, I'm sorry, tier four with a three hundred dollar cap.
At two and a half roughly. That was two and a half represents approximately eighty thousand dollars, ninety thousand dollars.
So we've got, I mean, without calling it drug, uh, one of the points that they point out to us while we're sitting over there is they have one drug that's tier four with Cigna. Eight hundred and thirty-four dollars for that prescription with them as a tier two drug. So all of a sudden, somebody who's worried about twenty-five percent up to three hundred dollars. You can see just simply with this here, they would be looking at, uh, tier two and plan forty dollar copay. They don't even have to get to two hundred. So those formularies are very important for us to take a look at those.
But, and they shift around carrier to carrier, how they classify it, whether it's tier four or tier two?
Yeah, each carrier, they've got their own pharmacy benefit managers, and, and they're, they're jockeying for position on that. And, and you'll hear all the conversation about limiting rebates. Well, that, those rebates are issued to the carrier based upon the volume they're buying, so they can't, it's hard for them to give it at the point of sale like we would like for them to. They get it usually four or five months later. They pull it back in, and they use that in how they price the proposal, to be honest with you. But again, just want to point out why this pharmacy piece is so important versus just looking at the dollars. Alright, so with the Humana proposal, they're coming in at three million eight oh five eight eleven as it currently is. If they ended up and changed that tier four conservatively, uh, you could be looking at another two and a half to five percent of three million eight. Is, is the way I interpret what they're telling me. Now, obviously, they push you toward using drug cards, and, and I'm not talking about good RX, but. Now, obviously they push you toward using drug cards and, and I'm not talking about good RX, but the discount cards that the manufacturers have. That does help the employee, but at the same point in time, it gets into that out-of-pocket maximum a whole lot quicker and then we're off to the horse races on claims. So we have to keep that in mind too. All right, with the Cigna plan, uh, and we'll talk, I'll get more into the, to the medical side of that. But one of the things that, that we look at with each, each of these is the wellness program. We talked about why that's important. Cigna offers a twenty thousand dollar wellness fund to the, uh, to the county. Humana offers a ten thousand dollar wellness fund. So with Cigna, they have what they call a motivate me program, which, uh, kind of leaves you wide open. But based on participation in the motivate me program, they earn points toward gift cards. And then the county would be open to funding those gift cards. Okay? So that's wide open. Same point in time, they also offer what they call OMADA, which is sixteen week diabetes management program. Up to this point, I think y'all had eleven people to participate in the OMADA program. Obviously that diabetes drives those drug costs we talked about. Uh, after eleven people had started in the sixteen week program, I think that by the time they got to sixteen weeks, there was only three people left. But again, just giving you that information of they are focused on diabetes. Finishing the Humana conversation, we talked about they have a ten thousand dollar wellness fund. They also have something that probably people in the, in the audience have even heard of, it's called Go Three Sixty-Five. A lot of the larger companies really rely on that. Because the Go Three Sixty-Five program is their proprietary program. That typically, if you, you can buy it on its own and have another carrier, it's going to cost you about seven to nine dollars per employee per month. But because if you go with Humana, there's no cost to the employer to have that. Same point in time, if those employees are earning points, uh, and I'll give you an example, you've got dental vision embedded. So if you go get a dental cleaning, automatically it's going to update the, the Go Three Sixty-Five program to give you points. Same thing with vision. Then you have biometrics that you can do with your health fare as well that they get points on. Steps, it syncs with their phone, all those types of things are building points. Well, so how do you pay for that? Well, with Humana, it's built inside of their program. There's no cost to the employer for that. So that removes that unexposed or that exposure, exposure to that liability of what that could cost for you. Also with the Go Three Sixty-Five program, um, there's, based on how much engagement the employees participate in the first year, they can either be like a bronze, a silver or a gold. By the time we get to next year, we'll measure that. And then based on that, the employer can get up to between five to eight percent discount additionally. That five to eight percent does not come in the monthly bill. It would come in the form of if you renew with Humana, they would throw that on top of the renewal next year to reduce that. Now, the one thing also we didn't mention is with the Humana proposal, you see there, it's like the negative point three now, we're waiting on the, the tier four impact. But they do offer a one-month premium holiday. They did that last year. And I think if I'm not mistaken, I think we got something like that with Cigna. So again, there's some additional savings there that you could achieve and achieving it in year two. Right?
Is the three sixty available for employees that don't take advantage of your health plan or is it just employees are on?
It's going to be for those on your health plan. Yep. All right.
Our program now, that we offer through what you're doing is available to everybody.
All full-time.
Full-time, yeah, okay.
And there could be discussion with Humana for us to extend it all full-time, but it would be in that add-on cost value.
Right, right. Do you, do you, but you anticipate continuing to do the work that you're doing proactively regardless?
Yes.
If you just pull up the side, this supports your efforts or whatnot. Okay?
So we've talked about the, the different plans, the different design options. So the next question is, or we talked about what does the, uh, impact to the, the pharmacy piece a lot? But another piece is very important is how about access to providers? The medical disruption. Obviously we know where Northside is in, in the, uh, contract negotiations with one carrier. So when we look at page seven, one of the things we want to do is we want to take the claims up through J- uh, January. We want to, uh, parlay those over into the network that Humana uses. And what we found was, uh, Cigna basically, um, when you look at them, ninety-eight percent of your claims are in network, ninety-eight point eight. With Humana, ninety-eight point five of them would have been in network. All that being said, I think you pick up two additional providers. One of those is down in Coming and another one is in Snailville, Georgia. But again, the, the networks pretty well match up.
You got an outlier, San Francisco. Is that somebody like on vacation that had to do something?
That, that is your OMADA. The one we mentioned is a unique, uh, and it's a unique provider for the diabetes program. Yeah, that's why you say that.
Okay, okay.
Cause what they do instead of, when someone decides to participate in that OMADA program, instead of charging that employee two hundred and fifty dollars, two eighty, what they do is just charge it to your claims whenever they participate in the program. So that's why they got it in there.
So you take that out, I mean statistically, then it's even better than ninety-eight point five percent.
Yeah, you can pick up about, uh, another point, eight, point seven on that. So want to, you know, we want to go over that to make sure, uh, we talked about the disruption there. So really all we have left to talk about is dental and vision. Uh, and again, the dental and vision is tied to the Humana. Obviously, just like now, you do have a Cigna plan that has the dental and the vision. But to get that price, you have to move the, the vision of the dental over. Any questions on medical at this point? When, when do you think you will get that other information on the tier four? I wasn't too happy that we didn't have it today, to be honest with you, because we, we really need to move forward. But, um, I know the physicians that we are, the pharmacists we talked to on conference calls and that sort of thing have now got involved between Humana sales and the underwriting team to get really specific with these particular, uh, underwriters to try to get that done. I would think by tomorrow afternoon, we should have that. Uh, if we don't, um, I'd be, I'd be extremely disappointed. But again, their pushback is they'd really like to not do it. I can tell and keep the, the premium like it is and move employees to using those manufacturers cards. But that leaves a lot to, to detail and I just don't, I, you know, I think we gotta be comparable when, what we're offering to you. That's just my, my recommendation on that. No doubt.
Obviously, is there a, I want to say happy medium, because it doesn't make anybody happy, but, um, instead of a three hundred dollar cap to move that to a higher cap, does that help negate what their price increase may be? Would it move it enough to make any sense? You know, it's basically in, in increasing your deductible in my world, but you're self-absorbing. So I don't know if it makes a big difference premium wise.
I don't know the answer to that. I would think it would. I mean, because it limits their exposure.
Don't know how much it would make a difference.
And I think in, in Christie's credit and, and administration is just keeping how the plan works and the administration of it and everybody's used to. It's a very big part of that. So they know how to use a half a tier four, here's what I know I'm getting. But again, uh, getting that, that formulary out there as well, uh, we know there's prior authorizations required, how you gotta go about that. All that becomes very important. So on the dental options, again, uh, on page eight, you'll see currently Cigna is proposing they would do a four percent increase if we stay with them, which would mean a six thousand, eighty-two dollar increase. Uh, again, um, an individual currently that has employee coverage would go from twenty-seven fifty-three to twenty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. And then Humana, uh, at the same point in time, would be a seventy-two hundred and thirty-four dollar increase or four point eight percent. So it's basically about a dollar and thirty cents, uh, per month, uh, on employee coverage. They do make a, a couple of modifications on space maintainers. They would move that to preventative services, which is covered at a hundred percent. Currently it's covered at eighty percent. And then on period, periodontal surgery and simple endodontics, it's covered at eighty percent. They would move that to type C services, which would be covered at fifty percent. So that would be a takeaway under the usual customary, uh, charges. What they offer there is they say that less than three percent of their employees are balance billed, but they're covering usual customary at eighty-five percent instead of ninety-five percent. So again, that's what they would be offering in their plan there. Other than that, everything's the same deductibles, you're out of maximum. Their network, currently, uh, you have, uh, thirty-eight and a half percent of your current dental claims are in network for Humana. Um, when we took the claims and laid them over, you'd have forty-eight and a half percent of your claims that would be in network. So that just reduces any of the UCR issues as well. Nobody significant outstanding there. You're, you, all of your, uh, you'd pick up one, I think you picked up two additional providers in your top ten providers. One of those is the industry for children of Georgia, and then the other is, uh, Dr. Barden incoming. Also, uh, let's say Lauren Palmer here in Dawsonville would now be in network. They're not currently in network. So from a local standpoint. Now, vision. Looking at vision, uh, Cigna is, uh, proposing a five percent increase, which would be a total of eleven hundred and ninety-six dollars spread across two hundred and seven, uh, different individuals. Humana option two, they're offering, uh, it's a fifteen percent increase, thirty-five hundred and ten dollars. Uh, for an employee that's currently paying five fifty-three, if we went with Cigna, it'd be five eighty-one. And with Humana, five dollars and ninety cents, so about thirty-seven cent increases. The percentage is kind of skew things here when you start talking about the smaller premiums, but still that's what's out there. At the same point in time, we did this last year, I just say it so everybody knows, you're playing on frames that reuse every twelve months, not every twenty-four. Most shift plans, they make them wait every two years. So again, something to spotlight there. Network, eighty-three percent of your claims are in network with Cigna currently. Uh, with Humana, eighty-four percent would be in network. You have a total of two hundred and seven employees participating roughly. And out of those two hundred and seventy, uh, two hundred and seven year to date, there's been ninety-six claims. So that tells you the utilization of how many people use those as well. So the, the network is important, but we always get questions. I'm a kind of guy, I go to the main street guy who puts, puts their sheen go out. I just like dealing with the, the local person. But there's some people who like, uh, going to the big box stores. One improvement and Humana went, went to bat to do this, Walmart would now be included. They're currently not included. And what happened with Walmart, that's a very iffy question because with Walmarts, they may be in network, they may not. It depends on if it's a store-owned center or if it's an individual that's contracted in there. That's what determines that. So they have, uh, Humana's come to bat on that. Uh, you do not currently have America's best. You would have them included. Eyeglass world and lens crafters would now be included. The only deduction would be Vision Works is currently included. They would not be included in the Humana network. And if I'm not mistaken, but if Humana uses an IMED, uh, an IMED network.
This is primarily an agreement with our three closest carriers, Dawsonville, Wandaque.
All right. So to close it out, uh, obviously we have rate guarantees on all the other products, but you're in year two. Excuse me, you're in year two of a three-year rate guarantee with the standard on basic life, with voluntary life, short-term disability and long-term disability. So we didn't have to, uh, renew or negotiate that and we won't have to next year. Uh, we talked about last year, the right way telemedicine helped out. So you have telemedicine and the, the consumer app all bundled together there. There's no increase there. So again, uh, that would be continued. We talked about the Cigna dental increase, the vision increase. We did the same thing with Humana. So to kind of break it down and look at the two medical proposals, when we look at Cigna, obviously staying with Cigna would minimize any type of plan design disruption, no re-education of employees. It's a second year, uh, care relationship. So we begin to build that relationship. Also the employee, uh, and their ability to understand how to use it doesn't have to be recreated and relearned. The big deal there is prior authorizations. That confuses a lot of people. And then they also have an advanced imaging policy, unless it's just medically necessary. You gotta go to a standalone versus a hospital. So those kind of things are what kind of can be stumbling blocks for employees. And we feel like having gone through a year with, uh, with Cigna, those are the, uh, the, definitely the positives. As I stated before, when you look at a, uh, one point eight percent decrease last year combined with a seven and a half percent, uh, increase this year, you're still looking at just a little over two and a half percent increase between the two years, which is well below medical trend. When we look at Humana, obviously, uh, their proposal, currently you see a point three percent annual premium reduction based on the current offering. That could change obviously with the tier four. And then also you get a one-month premium holiday, uh, which is a big deal as well. And I think in addition, how that Go Three Sixty-Five wellness program works, it removes that liability off of you for those gift card rewards, which could be pretty significant if they use this program. And it's a pretty popular program and successful one. Uh, again, it can provide up to an additional five to eight percent annual savings when we begin to look at the end of the year based on the employee engagement and we go to three sixty-five, depend upon if those employees achieve the bronze, the, uh, silver, the gold status. And we would know that and then take advantage of that. Again, you'd have to renew with them. So that's kind of, you know, what it really boils down to is, is the relationship that you currently have with Cigna. Uh, extending that over time and understanding there's good years and bad years. Uh, as well as, you know, there's real money on the table and, uh, these are challenging times and, uh, I know you have to think about that. And because of those types of savings out there, we've been really mindful of trying to build that plan design as closest to what you have. It's just that, that tier four is, is kind of a stumbling block for us right now. Questions? Obviously we need that information and you'll get that when you can, obviously. We can make a complete comparison to each one. So any questions?
What's our, what's the timeframe moving forward? What do we, what do we look like from a procedural standpoint?
Typically, you know, one of the, one of the big pluses is we was able to get your renewals for one versus April fifteenth or sixteenth to cut down on time. Uh, last year, uh, I know we presented on, I think it was May the sixth, the first time we came back and made the twentieth was whenever we presented last year and y'all made a decision. Depending on what she has in mind and obviously how your payroll cycle runs to get those, uh, open enrollments done and then those payroll files over to them. It's, it's really going to be driven internally. Now I would tell you from the B-SWIF software enrollment, they typically wants to have a thirty-day build out. Staying with Cigna, definitely going to be a positive on closing that down. You, you can imagine why that really changes. There's still some things we still have to do though to update it. And then with Humana, um, if we go that route, then we definitely have to put a lot of pressure on, on our, uh, technology team to get that built out, although it's pretty much the same. And then I think, you know, just determine what, you know, employee premiums look like internally. That'll be an internal discussion and we can help you with that. But that's really it. We need to have that first payroll deduction done and, and getting in here and doing the open enrollment.
So last year we made our decision on May twentieth, or is that's when y'all presented and we made it in June?
You made it. It's like May twentieth, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're ahead of the game compared to last year. That was a big frustration that we continually had. Oh, it's not, I get it. I do a carriers all day long. So I get it too. Okay?
We'd actually be making a decision one day ahead of last year. We make one on the nineteen.
Moving in the right direction.
Moving in the right direction, one day. That's all. And thank you. Special call meeting to make one.
Which we can look at. Y'all, y'all just continue to get that information. You'll be able to disseminate that to the board, I guess via emails over the next few days.
Day or two.
Thank you, Chris, for what you sent out.
Yep, yeah.
It was, it was very good, very good.
And hopefully we'll have an answer on the other delay.
All right. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have presentation request for approval of four oh one, a retirement plan reinstatement. Christie.
Um, this one will be much shorter, um, continuing with the benefits though. Um, I just come before you today to request your approval for reinstatement of our current four oh one A defined contribution retirement plan. Um, a copy of the plan was already provided. A copy of the plan was already provided to you earlier. However, the plan remains the same as it currently is with no changes or updates. They just request about every five years that we have a reinstatement voted upon. And if you would be so kind, I would like to request for it to be moved to the voting session this afternoon.
Questions for Kristy?
No changes, no updates, no, just.
It's exactly the same.
Just a new signature.
Okay, I'd say.
Basically.
Yes, let's move it to tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, presentation of application parade and assembly, five star NTP North Georgia triathlon planning and development director Sharon Farrell. Chair. Questions for Sharon?
Oh, sorry, I turned it off. Sorry.
I believe that it said that there was had been no response from G dot.
Yeah, we would not need a. Yeah, veterans part.
That veterans part.
Okay, okay. So you don't need anything. Not on this one.
Okay.
Any other questions? It's not a question. This is check my memory. Did we not approve sometime back? If these things came up and there wasn't any changes and that could be approved by administration without coming to the board?
We did.
Yes, sir.
All right, so let's do that because we already approved that. So take care of it, David.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have presentation of short term rental ordinance amendment. Sharon?
Yes, there is not a draft amendment in your backup, but I wanted to move forward to just basically test the waters. If you would be interested in adding to the. Short term rental ordinance, a variance process that would entail basically adding the language. There's not too many performance standards that could be varied, but I think we could take a look at mac maximum occupancies. As far as section thirty five oh seven three. There's an allowance for more bedrooms if you have five acres and there are some folks out there with large tracks. That have expressed interest in meeting the letter of our law, but but we don't have a variance process for them. The only other items that I see as numerical would be the number of vehicles per bedroom. Or a road frontage. Right now, it's a minimum of fifty feet of road frontage. So those are the three items that I found could be varied.
You go comment.
Well, I will, if you don't mind.
I won't, I won't, I won't.
Okay, so well, I think she and Sharon's prepared to draft amendment that is is really quite good. I think we wanted to get your input first as to whether we're going that route. To my understanding, this is really presented because we had someone who came forward and wanted to rent out more rooms and have more people. One or the other or both that provided for in the ordinance. And pursuant to our permitting process that we have established through our recent amendments. We have an opportunity that they can appeal to the Board of Commissioners if they're denied a permit. But that appeal would be simply, you know, on the denial, it would not allow them to change the ordinance. So this particular person filed an appeal, but then once she understood that that's not what she will accomplish, she can't. Change the ordinance by an appeal. She can only see if it's by denial and get it overturned. Then she withdrew the appeal. So I believe that's sort of what got this conversation flowing as to whether, you know, our permitting rules were hard and fast or whether there would be an opportunity for some kind of variance process. So that's first of all, that's the first level decision we need to make. I will say that I don't have another jurisdiction that has various process in the short term rental ordinance. They decide what the rules are and then permits typically. Here's criteria. If you meet it, you get your permit type of thing. A variant, you know, by the very nature of it, the way it's typically defined is if there's some kind of hardship. There's not going to be really a hardship that if you can't rent your home for more people or more bedrooms probably. So it may not fit perfectly, but I do think it's the mechanism to go with if you want to be able to give an individual consideration for the permits. And then it has a process that, you know, we need to know if you want to do it. Then do you want those to be processed to the planning commission who would hear other variances, which I think is what Sharon has proposed so far? Or do you want it to come to you? I don't recommend it being an individual. I think it needs to have a public hearing process and needs to be, you know, publicly vetted. But that would be a second question. And then the third question is, I think our our proposal would be that it would be limited to numerical issues. As Sharon pointed out, so it would be, you know, the number of occupants, the number of people per bedroom. The number of bedrooms and perhaps the number of parking spots. We wouldn't give them an opportunity to vary other things like having a point of contact that's available, the notice requirements, compliance with the other ordinance, things like that. But if there's any aspect of that that you say, well, this is absolutely off limits. We don't want to allow them to vary this numerical requirement, then we need to know that. And I think that's that's basically the guidance that we're seeking today from you.
Questions?
I'm thinking.
But we've not got that long.
Well, it's kind of a double edged sword because it creates a lack of uniformity in what we're setting in place. On the others, and I could see where some of them could make sense. I mean, I think that we were made aware of one that sits out in a thousand acres and they're in the middle and.
Forty five acres and eight thousand square foot.
And so you with a variance process, you could apply some common sense to some of these things, but maybe in another potential approach would be for us to just as we go through this process since it's new to us. We can always massage and amend our ordinance. So could we not, you know, if if our definition now is you got to have, I don't even remember what it is off the top of my head, but if you had. You know, one acre with four bedrooms, you have so many parking places, but if you've got forty five acres, then you could be allowed more bedrooms or something like that.
Yeah, so currently in, I believe I'm looking at the correct version, six bedrooms, maybe rented. Ten bedrooms if it's more than five acres is what we already provide for. But that's a good point. You know, if we don't like the rules, then change the rules. Right, well, in the challenge too, in this kind of situation, obviously is, you know, having a discretionary process. And so I think we, you know, want to make sure that there's some criteria. It'd be nice. I love tying it to. Six bedrooms if you're under five acres, ten bedrooms if you're more than five acres, or maybe, you know. Once you get to twenty acres, you can have as many as you want. We don't care. You know, I'm just being facetious, but you know, having some criteria, but maybe that's just how the rule get changed as opposed to saying we're going to just take it up on a case by case basis. Because anytime we do that, obviously we have to worry about the uniformity and the consistency and any kind of protection arguments if someone gets treated differently. And knowingly or something like that.
So that may be, as Chris said, that might be the best option. We add some more criteria. In there.
Or different.
Different thresholds, different thresholds and and improve on the ordinance we already have.
That was brand new. Want to hear more feedback as we move through it.
And that was kind of my comment. Anytime I hear variances, you have to be careful. You're setting a precedent when you're. When you let one person do it and if it's the same circumstances and you don't let them, I mean, I'd rather have it enumerated where it's, you know, consistent.
If we can invariably, we have these things that come up and it just does not fit. And and what I like, I mean, how this came up with me, these people are wanting to comply.
Yeah.
And I love that. I love that. And they've been very patient. So they're kind of on hold till we see what we're going to do, but I just love the fact that they're, they want to do the right thing. And 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 I mean, they're on forty five acres, eight thousand square foot house and you know, at that point.
What's the difference? What are they?
So how many bedrooms do they have?
It seemed like Sharon, do you remember the number?
I want to say twelve.
Twelve bedrooms?
I want to say twelve.
No, not twelve bedrooms. Was it tw- what was it twelve bedrooms? It was something about twenty, twenty something people and maybe they wanted to have thirty.
So there's some maximums for daytime.
Yeah, they are not varies.
That's different.
Nighttime is associated with the bedrooms.
Right.
And maybe, maybe we offer another tier if we got, you know, the five acre, the ten acre, and then we we go up above like you were saying and and there might be some more leniency. Because I think the whole premise of putting some restrictions in this is really to protect the neighbors that are imminently right there beside you. So it's not going to really impact your neighbors that are, you know, out of sound way, you know, and visually, it does make sense to provide maybe a little bit.
So.
So you don't, you're not saying. Did we, did we pattern ours after for South County? Did I dream that?
Well, you looked at a lot of different ordinances and so I think it's a bit of a hybrid between Forsyth and Cherokee.
Okay.
Others.
And I I was, I thought I was told that that Forsyth had to go back and do this very thing. Revisit this and that they got into some sort of variance.
Yeah, yes, well, they, yeah, they they have evolved. And Sharon was there for some time. You probably know it better than I can remember it. But ultimately, they went through permitting process and then they adopted also a special use permit process. So so they go through a essentially zoning process as well as the permitting process. And currently the board, you know, we don't do that here. I think the gist of it was when you gave us this assignment was let's keep it as simple as possible. And let's see how it works and and it'll evolve. And so. So for them, they are approaching it really in, you know, in the most, I would say. Complex way possible by having this sort of hybrid approach. And I think it's a good one. It's one we recommended. I mean, I think it's great. If you want the most control over your property, then you require them not to have a right to do it. But to come to the board and ask to even be able to use their property as a short term rental, they have to get a special use to do it. And you could condition that and then they still have to get the permit. So that, but Forsyth has had a lot of problems, you know, on the lake. And so that is why they have sort of that elevated process that you don't have a right to it. So in Dawson County, we've provided that you would have a right to it and in in any residential zoning district, you just have to come get a permit. And then here's these permit limits and do these things. Right, right. And so, so I don't know that I hear you saying you want to make the process more complicated, which would be.
But I think we we've just not got the whole ball of what we've not got enough in there.
So listing, I think. The consensus is to look at adding another tier or a couple of tiers, what we already have.
We can certainly do that and and candidly, I like that better than a variance process because.
Me too, because you could marriage yourself to death.
Well, you can. You can eat up the rules and then you, like I said, you have to worry about the discretionary application and how that could be unfair and inconsistent. So. You know, it would been then a question of what are your, maybe Sharon has some ideas on that. What are your specials? We already say. Over five acres gets you ten. So then what's the next jump?
What, where I would sit right now is to say this is brand new to us. So let's let this thing play out a little bit longer to see what other, because. We could be in here every month making changes to it versus let's hear some feedback. We got one piece of feedback. Let's see if there's any other things that are hanging out there that we may be able to consolidate into one change.
In the meantime, what do these people do?
Well, they just.
Well, they can rent ten bedrooms. And I think we, did we give them a modified approval, Sharon? I can't remember. Did they end up coming and getting an approval?
I don't think they, I don't think so.
I think they were invited.
People.
I think they were waiting. We would never have anticipated though that somebody had the septic tank capacity for more than ten bedrooms. Because ultimately are part of the application package is to show us your septic tank permit and there aren't any folks that build a house.
I can't say anybody has twenty bedrooms.
Right.
You know, at what point are you commercial?
Man, I rode all over this place. I don't think anybody's got twenty bedrooms.
Have you heard of any other bubbling up issues? I mean, is this the only thing? I mean, it's the only thing that we're interested in changing.
And have a max.
Well, and and I do think there's a couple of components. There's the, you know, two people per bedroom. Which is what our rule has been. And then there's how many bedrooms and then there's a occupancy daytime and nighttime. The nighttime's driven, as Sharon mentioned, by the bedrooms, but then we also have a daytime occupancy. So. That's something we'd have to, which is, yes, bedrooms plus two. So, and then Sharon mentioned something that that is important that she just said quietly. And that is at what point you become commercial. I mean, you know, if you've got, you know, twenty bedrooms and you want to put, you know, sixty people on a property.
That's, that's the question I had. I mean, we're getting into a boarding house or a hotel.
Yeah, right.
We got to get the fire marshal's office involved.
Well, that, that's right. And that's why that's so important.
Exits and exit lives and.
Because remember, these residential properties don't have to meet our fire guys who probably are cringing back there. They're not meeting all those standards. They're not sprinkled.
I was getting into the occupant loads where they got to be protected.
Yeah.
Don't get out anyway.
That's a good point.
Well, and yes, and you know, we've, we've had that issue with these special event facilities and when you put so many people in a place. Then you need to comply with all those fire code standards. So. That's where at some point, maybe it's not just the neighbors and how big is the property, but have you become a commercial operation?
So what is the threshold? I mean.
What is?
About, it's about twenty bedrooms.
That sounds like a lot, you know.
What, one what? What are you saying, Jim?
One person. Fifteen.
Wait, say that again, Jeff?
When they start paying fifteen.
Fifteen bedrooms or fifteen people?
Fifteen. In the fire code.
Well, they are paying. Just let it rip.
Well, we could also, you know, get with Chief Bailey and Chief Thompson and just sort of explore that side of it because that's a great point. You know, frankly.
I think we need to now.
I know. I didn't expect to hear fifteen. So, yeah, you say, why don't we do that? It sounds like there's a sense of maybe don't go with a variance. Possibly there's another tier, but we're already at ten bedrooms, ten times two is twenty.
Yeah.
Plus two, so they've got twenty two already.
Yeah.
And Chief Bailey shaking his head no, so.
But no cooking facilities, because I know with the bed and breakfast, cooking, then.
Right, right.
Whole other set of codes, but yeah.
But we don't have too many ten bedroom houses. So we're not going to see too much of that.
Well, I think the belief when you say it's a residential and it's a short term, you know, you're renting a home and it's not a commercial building. Then the notion of there being ten bedrooms, I think the idea was that that really captured.
Most of it.
You know, should be capturing most.
That'd be ninety eight point nine nine percent.
Right, so a twelve, it, I don't remember what was denied, but if it was twelve bedrooms, then.
I don't, I don't, I don't. Do you?
I do not. I read the appeal very quickly before we started drafting variance language.
So they did appeal this.
They did appeal it.
They did.
Okay. County attorney explained.
But then they withdrew when they learned they were, they appealed it and their argument was we should get twelve bedrooms or fourteen or whatever it was. And so they couldn't appeal and change the ordinance. So our advice to them was. You know, we could approve you for what the ordinance allows, but I don't know that they took us up on that, but.
Well, you you always go back and say, you know, we're looking at another tier, but you're going to meet all these fire regulations and nobody's going to do that.
Well, because then, yeah, it's so expensive. But that's, that's a good point that if we do have increased tier, it probably needs to come with additional responsibility in terms of fire code. And then the septic is a great point, you know. Don't know that that could be accomplished.
Well, these particular people were addressing that septic problem, weren't they? Didn't they do that?
Told they were.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. So that that didn't seem to be a problem. But the fire.
Yeah, that's. Too good perspective.
So just so that Sharon and I know our marching orders. Um, do you want us to bring this back to the next work session or just communicate with you in between with some additional information, maybe with the fire marshal or?
After you find out all the facts.
Talk with them, talk with them and then bring it back and and see if we do need a tier or.
But not calling for, we're not pursuing the ordinance change right now.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon. Next up, we have presentation of A and E Services War Hill Park Master Plan, Environmental Assessment, Parking Recreation Director Matt Payne. And Personnel Manager Melissa Hall. Like Matt's gonna handle it.
Well. Until I call on her, of course. Thank you, uh, Chairman and Mr., uh, Commissioners for allowing me to come speak to you, uh, to you all again on behalf of the Recreation Department. And, uh, this time specifically War Hill Park. We do have a, a, a couple of slides for us to take a look at. Um, this is for, um, Architectural Engineering Services and this is a required master plan update and environmental assessment. Uh, just in a little background, uh, I'm sure you know this information. There may be some citizens that do not. We, uh, as in Dawson County, we entered into a lease agreement with for War Hill Park with the Corps of Engineers. Uh, in two thousand and eight and that lease expires in two thousand and thirty-three. So we're in around fourteen, fifteen. And the lease agreement stipulates that an annual master plan is to be submitted and in, uh, to include any requested projects. If you got, if you will remember that, uh, in November of two thousand and twenty-one, you approved glamping. The glamping sites at War Hill Park. Well, in that six months, we have learned a great deal about what is required and what is not. From the Corps of Engineers as, as far as any kind of improvements. Uh, what we have learned that is as simple as it is, is running just a few electrical components to a couple of camp sites required an environmental assessment. And to do that, you have to upgrade your master plan. Make a long story short, we learned a great deal in a, in about half a year on what is required. To get some things done, um, with our lease agreement at War Hill Park. Um. So, uh, this particular slide, per the lease agreement, an environmental assessment must be completed for any improvements. And then the master plan is to be submitted annually. Now, of course, the master plan was done when this particular lease was, um, was forged in two thousand and eight and any additions after that requires a new master plan to be done. So that's where we are now. If you also remember in Splat seven, which was passed by our voters recently. Well, there are a couple of big projects that are to be funded out of Splat seven at War Hill Park. These cannot be funded without the environmental assessment done and without a revision of our master plan. Okay.
Can we pay for this out of Splat since that's a requirement?
Um, I'm gonna defer that one straight to our financial ladies who are a ton smarter than I am, but we'll get to that in just a moment. Okay. Some of the highlights here, some of the highlights for the environmental assessment, uh, would include research in the initial site evaluation of the analysis. And the report preparation, uh, submission to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And you, you actually have to submit that to their district office in Mobile, Alabama. And some of the scope of work needed, the master plan highlights would include a, uh, it would be, be able to create the map of War Hill Park. Showing the existing conditions, showing everything that's already there, previously approved and a layout of other, any new improvements. And then the creation of the master plan after holding public meetings and incorporating input. And then finally the submission to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. This is the tricky part, of course. The estimated costs for this particular project in this moving forward. The master plan, research, preparation and submission, uh, is given to us by this particular. Is thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. The environmental analysis preparation of submission is ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand and one hundred dollars. For a total of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And staff recommendations, staff respectfully request the board to approve the environmental assessment and master plan project. Determine the funds to be utilized, assign a budget amount for the professional services and approve the release of a request. For proposal to create a contract for scope of work needed.
Questions? Wow. Depends on how you look and you feel about the federal government. This is them at the best or them at their worst. I had, uh, several conversations with, um, Corps of Engineers after we found out and had a lot of conversations with Matt after that whole camping thing. Because the board in an effort to improve an asset that we have, and then this kind of bubbled up and it is, um, it, it, it's painful to be able to be managing an asset and trying to approve an asset for your community. And then turn around and be slapped with having to do some of this stuff. And, uh, it's, that's part of the process and.
I certainly, yeah, I don't wanna speak out of turn and speak disrespectfully, but I was kind of taken back when just, just to do four campsites.
Yeah. Well, not even.
Was an ex- in incredibly expensive ordeal.
Yeah, yeah. The trail stuff we've already talked about.
Right. We've already approved the playground and the trails to be done.
So.
The funding would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
We can't do the splash projects without this being done. So it seems like it could be part of splash.
That part.
Again, I'm talking common sense. We're talking federal government.
Sticky part of this is that, you know, that wasn't really included in the splash. However, I think that you could, we'll have to, we'll have to look at, it may be a legal thing.
Research it.
But, uh, but my recommendation would be to take it out of the general fund because we're, we're having to use all the money we get upfront right now. For the, um, new E O C and the communications upgrade. So, I mean, my recommendation would be to just go ahead and take it from the balance and pay for it.
What kind of funds we bringing in now? I mean, roughly on the, do we get some camping fees and bug doc fees?
I should have been more prepared to have that for you and I don't have that. I'll get that to you. But yes.
So in this process though, to, to Tim's point, if we can make these improvements, then it could potentially be a revenue generator. Going back to the whole glamping thing, cause that would be a revenue generator.
Then the new master plan, we're going, uh, in the new master plan that would be submitted, we're going to add more campsites. We're going to hopefully add some of these glamping campsites, uh, with the, with the addition of the walking trails and the playground. It's just gonna, uh, add more to the, to the foot traffic. And I am so impressed with our Dawson County residents who are so incredibly faithful to drop that three dollars in the slot. We really do get quite a good of, uh, amount of revenue from some, from our citizens.
We'll probably, we can get it back.
What's involved in an environmental assessment?
Oh, Lord.
Mister head county manager, he might, they can imagine it can probably give you a less environmental assessment.
What's involved in an environmental assessment? What are you, what are you?
Depends on the type of environmental assessment they're requiring. There's different. Banks or whatever.
Well, we're talking, we just talking about lake, uh-oh. Are they gonna have an architectural digging going on or?
Any Indian, uh, yeah, artifacts or anything.
Yep.
That's why I said it depends on the type of environmental assessment they're requiring.
It's a pretty, but it's pretty. Corps of Engineers, it's a pretty.
Yes. Oh, oh, yes.
Yeah, this one's pretty.
Oh, my goodness.
And then I think we have part of this, we have to pay them to review our information. We gotta put, come up with information and pay them to review.
So is that more of a review or is that they review and then reject it and have to do it again?
Okay.
Yeah, a chance to fix the.
Fix it. Okay.
Yeah.
And we did, I think there was conversation about seeing if it was part of the whole lake master plan that was done at one time. That might've come from when I talked to Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, I don't think you and I've had that conversation. I, I couldn't speak to that.
Seems like when I was talking to them, maybe they talked about there's, there's a whole lake master plan too. And some of these were part of that whole lake one.
What we've learned also is that the Corps of Engineers has went through a massive changeover in command and massive changeover in job titles. And what is Sue was doing, now John's doing, but John has no clue how Sue was doing it. And it's kind of a, kind of a little bit of a spider web right now.
That sounds normal.
Wow, okay.
Any other questions?
This has got to be done before they can glam.
Yep.
Whatever they're doing for that glam.
Before we do any of what we propose. So this has to be done before we can do anything. I, I back on it. I did read.
Dig a ditch.
Those glamping people went and did a deal at Amoco Falls and they're shut up at Amoco Falls. Yep, so they're off of that in Dawson County. Oh, no, they're not. Yeah, we still get back on it. Yeah.
I mean, if it was just for that, you know, it would be hard to do, but do what we've already approved in Splat. We're gonna have to do it sometime.
Well, we're required to do it regardless.
Yeah.
Every five years. They haven't enforced it. I mean, this should have been done.
Oh.
Every five years, I believe is what it was since we've had it. Environment. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Get it done.
So if we do decide to make any more changes after we do this, can we just change the master plan and not have to do the environmental again? Or is that? Cause I mean, it shouldn't, the environmental shouldn't change. Yeah, the master plan. Yeah. But once we do the environmental, then if, the next plus we wanna do something and we still keep the park. We won't have to do the environmental again because it'd already be done over the whole property, right?
Yeah, how long does that last? How long does environmental assess? So there's a flood and it messes everything up? Yes, yes. Oh.
Well, no reason why they gave it to us for free.
Yeah. Nothing's ever free.
And we'll just take them all.
Yeah.
But we did, but we didn't. All of them. Several years ago.
I told him we'd give them back to him.
Any other questions for Matt or Melissa?
Thank you.
Work. All right. That would make, open to number ten, presentation request, write off old outstanding ambulance accounts from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and seventeen. Vicky.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. Um, the item that I'd like to discuss with you is the request for write-off of old uncollectible ambulance accounts. Uh, if you remember back in two thousand and seventeen, the county adopted a policy of periodically writing off old uncollectible ambulance accounts. And, um, at that time, we also engaged a new billing company and, and then a little bit after that. We also, uh, went into a contract with a new recovery firm. So anyway, once the billing company has exhausted their, uh, efforts of collections, the accounts are turned over to a professional collections company. And they go through their processes. They'll attempt, I think, three or four times, you know, to collect and then they have to wait a period of time. It's kind of a long process. But anyway, uh, once they make their numerous attempts at collecting these old accounts. The account, and once the account is older than four years, we've been told that it cannot be pursued any longer. That that's the kind of the law for, um, Georgia. I don't know if Angela would like to confirm that or not. But, um, that's what the billing companies have told us. Um, currently the county has nine hundred and sixty-nine accounts from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and seventeen that need to be written off. These accounts total four hundred and ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Um, this write-off will be written off against our allowance for doubtful accounts. And there's currently one million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars in that allowance as of the end of twenty-one. Um, typically what happens each year when we have the audit, the, um, there's this calculation the auditors will go through. And then I look at it and kind of prove what they're looking at. They add to that allowance every year. So what happens is that, and it's usually two, three, maybe close to four hundred thousand. Just depends upon how high your, um, ambulance activity is for that year. And what they think that you might potentially have to write off. So anyway, there's an adjusting entry and there's money, additional expense that is posted against our accounts. And it increases this allowance. So basically this has already been expensed. It's just expensed each year over time. And so this accumulates in this allowance over several years. So like I said, right now there's one point seven million. So these accounts should be written off. And that way it'll make everything look nice and pretty. And, uh, we won't have all these old accounts sitting out there. You know, we've tried to give as much time possible to the collections company and to the billing company to collect these accounts. But once they've exhausted all their efforts and, and enough time has passed. We just really have to just write it off.
You said this is back to two thousand and seventeen? And, and we, uh, can't, uh, auditors accumulate right at four hundred thousand per year?
It, 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 it varies, you know, two, two fifty, three hundred. It just, it depends upon the activity that they see in the prior year. So there, there hasn't, I mean, we haven't closed out twenty-one yet. So, um, and I don't know yet what that additional amount will be this year.
I think the move we made was the new company was a better collection rate. So that should.
Yes, it has definitely gotten better. And, um, Chief Thompson and I were just talking a little bit earlier. How we're, we're definitely seeing an increase in.
What's our percentage now? Do we know collection?
I don't know off the top of my head. Do you know?
You have contractual write-offs that are built into it. I'm kind of, and we can, I would talk about it just beforehand. Where prior to, if you remember last year, we changed ambulance bill and the ordinance, we actually took the rates out. Prior to that, we were collecting between forty and fifty-five thousand a month. So with that change that we made last June that went before you all, um, we, we have seen a significant impact. Made some changes. We'll be bringing that back to you.
Yes, yes. There's gonna be some.
Because nationwide is about fifty-eight percent. So we're, we're, they're low, they're below sixty percent nationwide. So we're sixty-five to seventy-two. That's pretty good.
Other questions for?
Why do people not pay their ambulance bills? Do they not have insurance or? I mean, how, how do you not pay your bills? I'm taking notes.
Probably insurance. A lot of them don't have insurance.
Again, is that?
Sometimes on hard times, some people, and some people you can't track down. You know, they'll have a.
Car accident here.
Yeah, or they move and they can't track them down or they, or sometimes.
No forwarding address.
They can give a, you know, or they can give a fake ID that happens sometimes. So, I mean, that's kind of rare, but I think it does happen occasionally.
It has. Yeah.
So.
And I see you want us to move this forward?
Um, you can, yeah, if you, if you would, I would appreciate that. That way we can clean it up.
Go with it. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, next up, we have presentation of board appointments, library board, Tom Harder, reappointment term July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-six. Catherine Reagan Smith, reappointment term July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-six. Fred Meyer replacing Don Cargill, term July twenty twenty-two through June twenty twenty-four. And you have a little bit of information in reference to Mr. Meyer. And he is the recommendation of the library board. So I will present that to you to be voted on at our next. Me. Any other information needed on that?
I will tell you, Mr. Meyer, he, I was shocked, you know, when I went to Big Canoe and made that presentation. And I said, we had a hard time finding volunteers and just see if I want volunteer. And I said, we had a hard time finding volunteers and just see if I want volunteer. And I thought, my goodness, let's grab that on. So, and then I presented that to him and he was most agreeable. So I'm so glad.
Yeah, awesome. County manager report, David.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, IT begins, uh, the upgrade on courtroom C next week. Uh, this will finish out all of the courtroom upgrades that are currently planned. IT also has completed, uh, the install of the new cybersecurity system and is working daily with our vendor to identify and close potential security gaps. Additionally, IT completed the county electronics recycling with the help of facilities. The local company premier, premier surplus was used and we should have a total weight result, uh, for you, uh, soon. We're, uh, pleased to announce successful enter gov go live for Dawson County this week as it enhances our online land development permitting services for citizens. The, uh, combined efforts of planning and development, Diane Callahan and the IT staff made a, uh, the transition is success. The county has streamlined its process resulting in more efficient approvals for applications and permits. And we are confident that the development community will find value in the increased automation and improved communication. Dawson County Parks and Recreation will have a first kick celebration at the New Rock Creek Turf Fields at six thirty P M on May the tenth. Uh, there will be a brief program followed by refreshments, then a scrimmage on the big field. The U F A also will be in attendance, holding small scale practices on the other fields. The national, uh, national recognition for EMS week will be May the seventeenth through the nineteenth, recognizing paramedics and E M Ts. Uh, we also once again want to congratulate the finance department, uh, for, uh, their certificate of achievement, uh, which is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting. And his, uh, attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. So congratulations to Vicky and her team.
Yeah.
And that concludes the announcement.
Questions of the county manager. Good job, Vicky, as usual.
Yeah.
You did great. Your staff did great. Thank you for all.
We don't expect any less.
She doesn't either.
That's right. That's right. High standards.
County attorney report.
Mister Chairman, no public report, but I would like to request an executive session for pending litigation.
Any litigation.
The voting session. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we will do that after the voting session. With that, that's all the business we have in the work session. We'll take about a ten minute break and we'll be back for the voting session. Thank you for your attendance.